I will call to order the Monday, April 10th meeting of the Verona Common Council. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Clark, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Stewart.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak this evening? Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Third and final time, anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will move on. Next we have approval of minutes from the March 13th Common Council meeting, and those minutes were included with your bracket. What's your pleasure?
Second.
Of a motion by Mr. McGilvery, second by Ms. Ricky. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous council meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. I wanted to make sure that I asked this question, and I'll probably continue to do this at council meetings. So, our meeting in two weeks is everyone, well, we have the next Common Council. We have reorganization next week, Tuesday. Can everyone make next week, Tuesday? Again, the issue is we need to have a minimum of six orders to have an official meeting. And then what about the 24th? Anyone going to be absent on the 24th? Excellent, okay. I did want to mention tonight, I know we have announcements on the end, but elections just occurred, and although Mr. Stewart, Alder Stewart, was on our council for a short period of time, I just wanted to thank him for the work that he has done here. Certainly, I always appreciate it when people come to the meetings and are very well-prepared. I always appreciated all the questions that you asked and the comments that you made, so I really, really appreciate your time on the Common Council, and hopefully we'll still see you around. So, Scott, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been a pleasure being part of the council and working with this team here and representing constituents of District 2 and the population of the city as a whole, and two years goes by pretty fast, so possibly I'll be back then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes my reports for this evening. I guess one other thing is, if you have not submitted your committee preferences to me, please make sure that that is done by the end of the week, so that we can get the committee assignments made as quickly as possible. And that concludes my remarks. So, we will move to the administrator's report. Mr. Mikorsky, please.
I have no report this evening.
Okay. We will move to the engineer's report. Mr. Montpass, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few updates. The major one is the downtown streetscapes. Phase two and three has started. A project website has been created where you can find information, maps, and updates can be viewed. Letters and maps have been provided to all the businesses along the project route and within a one-block area, and biweekly business meetings will be scheduled as well. Traffic control and business maps and accesses, access maps have also been placed at the library and at Miller's Grocery Store. The other major construction project that's going on is the reconstruction of County PD. Edgerton has started construction again out there. They finished the retaining walls on the south side of PD, and they're starting work up near Woods Road. It is anticipated that that will be getting full gear here very shortly. A few minor other projects, the soil borings have been done on the other piece of PD from Woods to M, and their preliminary right-of-way map should be done by the end of April. Construction, pre-construction conference for the signal designs, which were awarded last month, had, took place on April 6th, along with a public information meeting, and AECom is finishing up the survey work for the parking lot reconstructions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Montpass. Are there any questions for Mr. Montpass this evening? Any questions? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. The projects for the resurfacing of the city parking lots, are they going to be all done at one time, or are you going to package that in a flow?
They will be bid as one package. I don't believe that we will have them all tore up at the same time. They will concentrate on one, move to finish that one, move to a second unit, and then move to the third unit. We won't tear everything up at one spot.
And then the specific question on the senior center, as you know, the parking lot is on the south and the north, and the entrance to our building, primary entrance, is on the east side. So, would you know at this time which one will go first, or will you be willing to tell Mrs. Hanson well in advance, so she can inform our people, because for seniors to exit and enter, you know, they need little special needs there.
Yeah, we will coordinate with all of the buildings, and as far as which one goes first, that hasn't been determined, but the senior center parking lot will be rebuilt in stages. We will maintain access there, but we'll give them plenty of time to let them know when we're going to start, and also make sure that the ramps and access to the building is maintained full-time while they're out there.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Montpass? Seeing none, we will move on then to committee reports. We'll begin with Parks and Recreation Commission. Ms. Ricky, please.
I would like to move approval of a service agreement with MSA Professional Services to provide an aquatic center planning and conceptual design study not to exceed $33,000.
We have a motion by Ms. Ricky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. Questions or some background? Ms. Ricky, please.
The background is that this agreement will allow MSA Professional Services to develop, one, a program and conceptual design for a new municipal aquatic center, and, two, develop a facility needs program, a site and aquatics plan with global project budgeting and schedule to allow the city to identify the anticipated project vision. Recommendation for agreement was approved by the Parks and Rec Commission on March 15th.
Questions or comments? You've heard the background on the motion. Questions or comments? Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I know that this is specific just to the design, but it does specify in there, before we can move on to the second phase, we have to choose a site. Is it okay to talk about the information about how we will go about picking a site, or is that just going to be at a subsequent Parks and Rec meeting? Just wondering the procedure for that.
Mr. Walker, do you want to respond to that, please?
Well, we're still working under the, I guess, trying to come to an agreement with the school. We haven't met with them since the referendum was passed, but I still believe personally that's the best option, and frankly, maybe one of the only options we have right now with current, let's say, city-owned land. So, if that effort works out, then we have a site, and we can proceed with Phase Two. If not, there'll be a pause between Phase One and Phase Two. They'll identify the size of the site we need in order to accommodate the facility, and then if things with the school don't work out, then we're going to have to somehow identify where we can come up with that amount of land to make that happen. So, that's...
And I would just say my response, that would be, everything is on the table. Yeah. Mr. McGilvery?
Thank you. Well, I've got Mr. Walker up there. I don't know that the council has ever said specifically that they would want to move forward with the school district. They're interested in hearing what the school district's ideas are, but I, from my point of view, I'm not necessarily in the same boat that you're in, thinking that that would be the best result for the city municipal pool, working, you know, having it in conjunction with the school district, given what I've heard about what their thoughts are, about what their needs are versus what the city's needs are. So, I think that it'd be important at some point for us to have a discussion about what the council thinks, and I'm happy that you're working through this with the school district and seeing what they're interested in doing, but I would like us to have some subsequent conversations sometime before we come to the point where we're making a decision.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Ricky, please.
I don't think the idea is sharing a pool with the school district necessarily. It would be sharing the land that the, that an indoor pool and an outdoor pool would be on. That's my understanding, that the city is interested in an outdoor pool.
Again, my response would be, everything is on the table. Ms. Doyle?
I suppose my only fear with moving forward with this plan is without having a site in mind. If we create a plan that we just end up not having a suitable site for, if this is going to be wasted dollars.
Right. Well, and that came up with the park board as well. I'm glad you brought that up. I would note in fine print that this effort is on a time and material basis. So, depending on which way this action goes, or, you know, which way this project heads, I mean, we may or may not continue and follow through with all MSA's recommendations, but at least we get through Phase One, and then see where that leads us, and then if we move on with them to Phase Two, obviously, then we'll fulfill the study, but the contract doesn't lock us in to completing it.
Other questions or comments? Other questions? Mr. Linder, please.
Yeah, maybe I just got confused. So, this is for how big a pool and what kind of programming we'd have and that type of thing, correct? That's $33,000, but, and it does not include a site?
Right. So, the two phases, the two phases. The first one is to identify the programming needs and give us a rough, an estimate, ballpark estimate of what different amenities will cost, how big the pool should be square footage-wise, and then it'll let us know what sort of acreage of site we need in order to make this work.
Including the parking lot, how much parking we need?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All that. And then Phase Two, and then after that step, then we need to identify a site, and then they'll go ahead and do conceptual design on the site we give them, and then we'll have, you know, renderings and actually design the pool.
So, all those rendering stuff are, would be included in this?
There would be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to note that in the past, when we've looked at doing any kind of a facility, whether it's the library, the public works, a future public works, you still have to figure out what size you want it to be. Are you building it for a 20-year or 50-year process? So, we've done that in the past. This is no different. We're talking about building a pool as opposed to a public works building. So, I can understand why people might be hesitant, but you have to know what your needs are first before you can decide how big of a space you need. That's how I'm looking at it.
And some of that will determine what potential costs would be, and we have to make sure that that works within our financial plan as well. So, we really need this, this next step. Other comments, questions? Ms. Doyle, please.
So, based on this contract, will we basically just be getting one recommendation of this is what a community of your size should have, or might there be multiple options? So, if we have different lot sizes, that could accommodate maybe different iterations of a pool?
I believe it specifies one, one design, but it does have the first option as a focus group, where we would meet to discuss what the community needs are, and then the second option would include public input, so that we would have a design that, you know, the community had some input in, and, you know, in theory, we would have everyone on board with.
Seeing no other questions, the motion before you is to approve the service agreement with MSA at a cost not to exceed $33,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Ms. Ricky, anything else from Park and Recreation?
No.
Thank you. We will move then to Plant Commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-17-020, approving a certified survey map to create one lot east of Kettle Marine Trail and the Verona Technology Park.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The proposed certified survey map will create one lot east of the Verona Technology Park that will allow for the construction of a building for Cellular Dynamics International. The proposed lot is 12.3 acres in size and includes a dedication of 840 feet of right-of-way for the extension of Kettle Marine Trail. The Plant Commission reviewed the certified survey map on April 3rd, 2017, and voted seven to zero for approval.
You've heard the background on the motion. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve Resolution Number R-17-020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 9B2. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-17-021, approving a certified survey map to create two lots at 102 Prairie Oaks Drive.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder, please.
The proposed certified survey map will create two lots at 102 Prairie Oaks Drive. The proposed certified survey map would help facilitate the expansion of the Goddard School. The proposed lots conform to the minimum lot size requirements of the zoning ordinance. The Plant Commission reviewed the certified survey map on April 3rd, 2017, and voted seven to zero for the approval.
Once again, you've heard the background on the motion. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. McGilvery, please.
Please have the record reflect. I'll be recusing myself from this one.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, abstentions? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution Number R-17-021. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries with Mr. McGilvery abstaining. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. And next is Agenda Item 9B3. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance Number 17-891, amending Section 13-1-42 zoning map of the corner ordinances of the city of Verona by assigning public institutional zoning classification to parcel number 286/0608-164-9275-2.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The proposed zoning map amendment would zone 3.6 acres of land along West Verona Avenue to public institutional. This property was recently acquired by the city and has no zoning classification. The Plant Commission held a required public hearing on April 3rd, 2017. Comments from the Plant Commission included questions and concerns about the potential long-term use of Half Mile Road. The Plant Commission did vote seven to zero for, to recommend for the approval of the zoning map amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Ordinance Number 17-891. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Is there anything else in the Plant Commission, Mr. Linder?
That is all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and then we will move to the Public Works and Water Committee. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9C1, I make an emotion to approve a warning contract for Project 2017-106, oh goodness, venomous seal coat.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Two sealed bids were received for the project. The base bid was submitted by Scott Construction of Lake Delton, Wisconsin, in the amount of $203,495. The high bid was in the amount of $212,821. The engineers' estimate prior to the bid opening without contingencies was $219,880. Staff is recommending a warning to contract to Scott's Construction of Lake Delton, Wisconsin, in the amount of $203,495.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments for the council or for staff? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve awarding the contract for 2017 pavement service treatment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Under Item 9C2, I make an emotion to approve an agreement for professional services with AECom regarding Project 2017-115, well-sight sighting and public service commission application.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
With increased development into Liberty Business Park and Technology Park water capacity, pressure and fire flow is a concern. Project 2017-115 involves well-site engineering report and public service commission approval and construction authorization for an additional well in the southeastern corner of the city of Verona. This agreement does not involve the preparation, construction documents at this time. This agreement is not to exceed $24,225.
Questions or comments on the motion? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a professional services contract with AECom for well-sight sighting and public service commission application at a cost not to exceed $24,225. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Next up, Item 9C3. I make an emotion to approve an agreement for professional services with AECom regarding Project 2017-116 for traffic impact analysis at Liberty Business Park and Technology Park.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Again, with the increased development of the Liberty Business Park and Technology Park, an updated traffic impact analysis is required. The last traffic impact analysis was completed in 2000 for the Davis property, which is now known as the Liberty Business Park. Project 2017-116 involves traffic data collection, traffic counting, projections, operational analysis, recommendations, and a report. This agreement is not to exceed $52,000.
Again, you've heard the background on the motion. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a professional services contract with AECom for traffic impact analysis for Liberty Business Park and Technology Park at a cost not to exceed $52,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Under Item 9C4, I'm making a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with Denofrio Kotke and Associates for construction management and public relation services regarding Project 2015-104, the streetscape Stage Two and Three, contingent upon approval from the city attorney.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, did you want to add the not to exceed amount in there?
Oh, yes. Sorry, not to exceed $54,600.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz, you fine with that? All right. Questions or comments on the motion?
Do you want to explain what it is?
The explanation, sorry.
Sure. This consulting services agreement with Denofrio Kotke and Associates is for management, documentation, and product review for the designed services during the construction. That includes construction staking, product submittal review, contract administration, approving pay requests, public information presentation, and map pre-preparation, public information meetings, business meetings, detour maps for public safety, project closeout. Sorry, and project closeout.
Okay. Any questions? Questions or comments for the committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the professional services contract with Denofrio Kotke and Associates at a cost not to exceed $54,600. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Next up, 9C5. I'm making a motion to approve the final closeout for Project 2016-105, the Downtown Streets Reconstruction Project Phase One.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Change Order Number Two, rectified as-built quantities on January 23rd of this year. This request is to close Project 2016-105 Phase One. The project includes street and utility reconstruction on Church, Grove, and Marietta. No change in contract value is required.
Once again, you have heard the explanation of the motion. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the final closeout of Downtown Streets Reconstruction Project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Item 9C6. I make an emotion to approve Change Order Number Two for Project 2016-101, the 2016 street rehabilitation.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
Change Order Number Two is to rectify as-built quantities and close Project 2016-101. This project was the street rehabilitation on South Hillcrest, Commerce Parkway, Schein Whitzer, oh goodness, Noel Way and Jenna Drive, plus the installation of the Bike Island and Wayland Road. The original contract value was $633,675. Change Order Number One resulted in an increase of $69,455.75. This change order results in a reduction of $31,080.84. Therefore, a final contract value of $672,041.91.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. You've heard the background. Questions or comments for the committee or for staff? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Change Order Number Two for Project 2016-101, 2016 street rehabilitation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of two left here. Item 9C7. I'm making a motion to approve a developer's agreement for Cathedral Point Phase Seven.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
City staff and our city attorney have worked with the developer for Cathedral Point Phase Seven in preparation of the developer agreement. Phase Seven includes 46 lots. The agreement anticipates that construction of public improvements to serve the phase will commence in early June of 2017, and will be substantially completed by September of this year, pending permit approvals.
You've heard the explanation on the motion. Question or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a developer's agreement for Cathedral Point Phase Seven. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
This is my last item, Item 9C8. It's for, to approve a developer's agreement for Kettle Marine Trail Extension.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
City staff and city attorneys have worked with the developer in preparation of developer agreement. The extension of Kettle Marine Trail is necessary for the future construction of the Cellular Dynamics International Facility by Live Cell LLC. The agreement anticipates that construction of the public improvements to serve this area of the Technology Park will commence in early June of this year, and will be substantially completed by November of this year, pending permit approvals.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve a developer's agreement for Kettle Marine Trail Extension. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, anything else from Public Works and Water?
I think eight items was enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move then to the Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9D1, I'll make a motion to approve the monthly bills from March of 2017, that amount being $406,128.20.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, first being to Armor Proxi for $127,723.52. That is for the final build-out of the fire station apparatus bay and the EMS bay. If you get a chance to go over there and take a look, looks pretty good. They've got it all done. That amount again, $127,723.52. Next one being to the Verona Area Chamber of Commerce, that amount, $55,695.83. And finally, to AECom Technical Services, $35,867.35 for various engineering services throughout the city.
You've heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Are there any questions for the committee or for staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling $406,128.20. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, that motion carries, and the bills have been approved. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Also, for April's bills, we have $349,358.56. I'll make a motion to approve payment of those bills.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. Again, in the way of explanation, three of the larger items, again, AECom Technical Services for April, engineering services, $25,775.86. Second one being to Burke Truck and Equipment, Inc., for our new snowplow, $41,718.3. And finally, to Midstate Equipment for a John Deere 1600 Turbo Wide Area mower, $46,495.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Questions or comments? Questions or comments on the explanation of the major expenditures? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the April bill signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item nine D two, we had a brief explanation at the finance committee level due to time. We did make a, I would make a recommendation, excuse me, the committee did recommend approving resolution one seven dash zero two two, approving a development agreement with LiveCell LLC for the construction of the facility in Verona Technology Park. At this point, I believe it'd be appropriate to have Mr. Kleimeyer come up and address the entire council and kind of give us a more detailed explanation of where we're at.
If you prefer, I could make the recommendation and we could have a second to open the discussion or we could just have Mr. Kleimeyer.
I think we're fine. Yeah. I think we're fine with Mr. Kleimeyer. I was just checking with Mr. McCorsky that we were doing it okay. So, Mr. Kleimeyer, please.
Yes. So, this development agreement relates to the Cellular Dynamics project. You've already had two items on your agenda tonight that you've taken action on, the certified survey map, and the Kettle Moraine Trail extension also relates to this project. In your packet, you have the development agreement proposed between the city and LiveCell LLC. So, LiveCell LLC will be the developer of the project and then it will lease the land in the, or I'm sorry, the land in the building to CDI for the, for what they do. What I can do at this point is probably highlight some of the key provisions in the development agreement. There will still need to be some additional changes. We have been speaking with the developer late last week and earlier today, a few changes that I can identify. And then, my recommendation is going to be into going to closed session to discuss a few of the items where I think as city staff, we have recommendations, but we certainly want to be able to discuss them with you because you may have a different opinion on those issues. The other thing would be, you know, at the end of the, at the end of the agenda item, city staff is going to be recommending approval of the development agreement, subject to final review and approval by the city administrator and city attorney. And again, that relates to some of these issues that we think we might have to update. The issues that would be updated, we'll discuss with you, and then some of them I would call more logistics as opposed to substantive terms. The agreement itself is a pay-as-you-go agreement, which is the type of TIF agreement that we prefer. It's, once the increment is generated, then it would be paid out to the developer. Right now, the provision is that 80% of the tax increment that would be generated would be provided to the developer with 20% remaining with the city capped at $6 million. And so, one of the exhibits to the development agreement, exhibit D, is the financial schedule that Aylers and Associates typically puts together for our TIF agreements, I think. Okay, yep. And so, this, I think, provides a good description, and I'll just wait a second here. And so, as I stated at the finance committee meeting, obviously, as we're negotiating these agreements, the developer has to look out for its interest. The city has to look out for its interest, in particular, if things don't necessarily go as planned. But, obviously, everyone is still hoping that everything goes as planned. And as you, as you look at this, right now, the numbers that Aylers has put together, if you look at the highlighted portion, it's anticipated that we would be able to pay off our $6 million to the developer within nine years, leaving a considerable amount of time for the city to still collect 100% of the tax increment generated for the project. So, I think that's something, you know, to keep in mind as we're, as we're talking through the agreement. A couple of other provisions maybe to highlight in open session would be that the, in section three, the developer, I think, is anticipating to spend more than $40 million for construction of the project. However, we have language in here indicating that the developer will spend the 40, and if they spend less than the 40, then that percentage that would be shared with them, the 80/20, could get adjusted. I'm sorry, not the percentage, but the, but the cap, the dollar amount that's capped, the $6 million could potentially come down. Again, nobody's hoping that that happens. We want a fair amount of money spent of the project because then that ideally increases the increment that's generated. One unique feature for this development as opposed to maybe some agreements that we have with municipal revenue obligations, typically, we have the MROs being issued once the occupancy permit is issued for the building that's been constructed. Here, in light of the work that we anticipate being done, we, as city staff, are recommending that we issue the MRO when the foundation and footings for the building are completed. That's going to allow for the developer to start a year earlier, I think, on payment of the increment. And that's reflected in the schedule that you have. As you see, the first year in 2019, there would be potentially an incentive payment of just over $100,000 made to the developer, whereas it dramatically increases after I think that, again, we talked about the 80%, 20% split in section eight related to the use of the tax increments. One other item that I would highlight in open session at this point is that section nine talks about the terms of the municipal revenue obligation. And in subsection B, one of the things that municipalities are seeing more frequently now is if, if the manager of the project makes their tax payment by the January 31st deadline, typically, in the past, you've seen that the payment under the municipal revenue obligation is not made to the developer until November 1st. Here, a request has been made that if all of the, or if the developer makes all of its tax payments by that January 31st deadline, that they would get paid by March 1st. And if they don't make all of the payments, because you can split your payments for real estate, you can pay half by January 31st, half in July, if they don't make their entire payment by July, or by, excuse me, January, so they split it like they're entitled to it under the law, then the payment would be on November 1st. Obviously, the benefit to the developer is that they get paid earlier. The benefit to the city is, hey, there's an incentive for us to get, have all of the taxes be paid by the January 31st deadline. And that's something that, as a municipal attorney, I'm seeing requested by more developers in other communities also, that split of when they make it paid. At this point, I guess it would be my, I mean, I am certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have right now. There are certain other topics that I would like to discuss with you, but I would prefer to do that in a closed session as I think we start getting into more negotiable issues. And so, that would be my recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Kleimeyer prior to accepting a motion to go into closed session? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. Just to clarify with the closed session about, this will be just a very narrow discussion based purely on negotiating the developer's agreement.
The only thing that will be discussed in closed session would be the terms and conditions of the development agreement.
Okay, because that, not to get off topic, but that does sound like what, what closed sessions are actually supposed to be for. So, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Seeing none, I would accept the motion to go into closed session. If someone's willing to read the motion, Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to go into closed session. The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin Statute one nine, period eight five, parent one, parent E. For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons deem a closed session necessary, the common council may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Doyle. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Clark?
If I could, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to, I do anticipate that we would come out of closed session and make a motion.
Correct. Correct. Thank you. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Clark, if you would, please.
Alder Ricky?
Aye, because I thought there was enough background information given in open session. Thank you.
Alder Stewart?
Aye.
Alder Steiner?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Diaz?
Aye.
Alder Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Linder?
Aye.
Alder McGilvery?
Aye.
And we are in closed session. Without any objection, any city staff that's in the room and legal counsel wishing to remain, you may do so. And we are in closed session without any objection, any city staff that's in the room and legal counsel wishing to remain, you may do so.[13.82][13.85](end of transcript)
Back in open session, are there any motions at this time? Mr. McGilroy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under item 9D2, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 17-022, approving a development agreement with LiveCell LLC for the construction of a facility in the Verona Technology Park, subsequent to review and approval by city attorney and city staff.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilroy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Questions or comments on that motion? And Mr. Chouche?
I will be recusing myself from this vote.
Okay, we will let the minutes reflect that. Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Diaz, please.
Was it city staff or the city administrator?
I said city staff, within understanding it would be the city administrator working We'll clarify that, and Ms. Doyle, you are fine with that as well. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Luke. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, and that motion carries. We are on to new business. New business discussion, possible action regarding operators licenses. Ms. Clark, please.
I have operator license applications from Scott Thaxton and Geraldine Gans for treads, Royal Scheider for Fisher King Winery, and Deborah Bloom for QuickTrip.
You've heard the applicants. What's your pleasure? We have a motion by Ms. Riki. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Doyle. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the operators licenses signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, and that motion carries. We are on to agenda item number 11, which is announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening?
Jack.
Jack, Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Stewart for your time in District 2, and wish you best of luck, and stay in touch.
Enjoy your retirement.
Any other announcements this evening? If not, a motion to adjourn would be in order. We have a motion by Ms. Riki. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Doyle. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Opposed, no, motion carried, and we are adjourned until next week, Tuesday, for reorganization. Thank you, everyone.